At this time, I'd like to call the work session for March sixth, two thousand and twenty four to order. Roll call, please.
Roll call, Parker. Gonzalez.
Here.
Brenneman.
Here.
Haley. Waits.
Here.
Mulvaney Henry.
Here.
You have a form.
Hey, at this time, I would ask for approval of the amended agenda.
Rose, so moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the amended agenda. At this time, we'll have a roll call vote, please.
Roll call, Gonzalez.
I.
Brenneman.
I.
Waits.
Hi.
Mulvaney Henry.
I.
That motion carries.
Okay, so next thing on the agenda is pole replacement program and Southeast Wyandotte County grid improvements.
I could put on board comments, GM comments. We want to, we can. Want to add that to, you know, the board comments.
We usually like if somebody's attended and or, you know, we usually share if they, if you're on one of the mayor's committees and.
So, uh. Want to add that to my favorite adding board comments and GM comments to the agenda.
I'm in favor, I'll second that. If you made the motion, I'll second it, if not, I'll make the motion.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we amend the amended agenda to improve a section for board comments and general manager comments, so. At this time, roll call, please.
Roll call, Gonzalez.
I.
Brenneman.
I.
Waits.
Hi.
Mulvaney Henry.
I.
That motion carries.
If you're doing that, it's too long, that is the agenda.
One. Just whole comments.
Uh, I attended the Public Works meeting, I believe, on the twenty sixth, so last Monday. And there was nothing on there that impacted BPU.
I attended the, uh, Public Works and Finance, uh, not Public Works, but, uh, Economic Development Finance Committee meeting and, uh, nothing other than BPU other than the fact that the development that was being on, that was going to be going on. Um, uh, would be some improvements to the infrastructure, including BPU work.
Okay.
Uh, GM, things one, uh, Tom Roman, I went to G O B by government. Three weeks ago, Tom, two weeks ago.
Well, before, right when the mayor was leaving, he called a meeting before he, before he took lead. Between the mayor, wanted us to be with the mayor, him and the mayor pro temp.
Right. So the whole meeting was, well, he had a speaking with a short list and a long list of items, just down there. But the only thing I'll really mention from that is, you have the issues with the development out West. Home field problems. Around undergrounding, around overhead, that's currently there. Uh, so you want to see all that underground, that that area being underground development. We'll be going back and forth probably trying to come up with an agreement. Long story short, we were able to sit down and compromise on both sides to be able to come up with an agreement, so. Uh, projects moving forward, if you are proud of that, you can see the hotel going up. And we have to delay our service agreement. But I think in one time they were asking about the finance part of it. So we totally compromised and designed construction, we're not going to do that. Uh, price did get lowered quite a bit. And, uh, so they are moving forward, but the whole idea of what the development agreement and any other inside. We're going to move forward with giving them overhead power for construction purposes, but still all did all exist and we structured it out there. One of our substation that feeds into the east side of Village West under the highway and just all. We had reached that, uh, now, many meetings and, and. Looking through several disagreements, but we're there.
I appreciate that, uh. You got them to agree to that, the thing is that many of the complaints that I received from, from constituents is about us giving away stuff.
Yeah.
And, and for them to, you know, not place work, that makes a lot of.
About that sentence. That was, okay, then that was something that I brought up early is we're not going to ask you, the rest of our community to pay for this. Yeah, uh, I mean, this is something that UG weren't still out. And you can probably some of that differently in one small section, but, uh, if the UG is insisting on that being underground. A couple of years ago, this board has a revolution directed at our manager and. That's what I'm, I'm, so. UG don't want to change your orders, I'm obligated to follow. Finally heard and, uh, and we're going down the path that they have to bury, bury all of it.
Until they did start construction out there this week.
Yes, okay.
And I, I've caught Darren, he probably doesn't know what I do, but I. We did start out there this week and, um. They are experiencing a lot of theft on that job site, so we're gonna probably have to be conscious about what we store out there while we're working. Because we already had on a call close timeline because of all the great work Darren and his team did to get this thing manageable for them. Um, we had to reorder some items, and so those, those lead times are, um, button right up to the end of the project construction timeline. So we are going to be able to get them power, but we're going to have to be conscious about how we're doing and what we're leaving out there because of some of the issues they're already having on the site.
What all, I just went by there yesterday for the very first time and I saw the big, I don't know, whatever is in that building, what else is part of that?
So there's the Margaritaville Resort, there's a Top Golf, there's a theater, and there's one other.
And so those are not.
Yeah, there's a fourth, but I don't know what it is. It's all in that area. It's all part of that same build out, it's all affecting what the work we have to do.
That we have.
First and foremost thing is the Margaritaville.
I drove down ninety, Ninetieth Street and across the street from the soccer field, I noticed they have a bunch of baseball dimes now. They put in, they put in a bunch.
That's all part of the home field.
So they don't have security out there?
I don't know, apparently not enough if they have any.
I think I was just on state, whatever you can see back before you get to the legends, whatever, that's like Ninety Fourth Street, I think.
Jeremy, do they have a local general contractor?
I don't know who all he's using, he's had to pull several resources together. I do know they reached out to, uh, App Electric to help them with some of their duck bank estimates, but outside of that, as far as their other concrete work at all. They are, I guess typically known for, his developments are all heavy in the area, so I'm sure he has relationships with most of the people in this area, but. I don't know who they are, unless Darren knows.
He's, okay, okay, thank you.
And. The, beyond the Margaritaville, some of the ones that Jeremy mentioned, they are still working, I think, and they being the developer, not the UG is working on finalizing their agreements with. With the other entities that they're trying to pull into the project.
They have one in Missouri, is that correct? Or no?
No.
Uh, Home Fields, not in Missouri?
No, that, that project won't bust.
Do they have them someplace else other than right here?
Mr. Napper does, I understand, but I'm not sure where.
I mean, is it called Home Fields? Yeah, I thought there were more than one. Okay.
Well, the UG did have a local, I'm in minority.
I didn't work on those development agreements, so I can't speak to what's in there or what's not in there.
Uh, second thing before we get into the agenda, Jeremy.
I, Washington DC, A P D A blockhead, uh, headed to the. Met with, uh. Representative Sharice Davis, Dick Luterman's office, he wasn't there, he wasn't there. Senator Marshall's office, he wasn't there, Senator Moran did show. So the Melter staff talked about some of the things that we're planning for this year and next year. Talking about is there a possibility that, uh. Your marks will eventually direct expenses, which we're now calling is going to be available again in the upcoming budgets. They all see the thing, Democrat members, like, see the thing that they're gonna include some of that in the federal budget. Those are election year, I guess it'll be a race to see either add something or actually remove something for election purposes. But at least they all see the thing that that was a possibility, so we need to tell them that, uh, we've got three projects we're going to be submitting for. Rational considerations, some two electric, one water, I'm sure they'll ask them to prioritize that. Certainly set back. We did see Sharice Davis at the prayer breakfast.
Yeah.
And we kind of put a bug in our ear, everybody.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I was gonna say, it's probably easier to see Sharice around here, she's everywhere, it seems like.
Yeah, she's.
She was at the scholarship thing too, did you see her there? Yeah.
So, no other questions, uh, on the, the topics of mine are really basically on how, got a little state funding request, uh, Jeremy, you want to say anything?
No, the guys did a great job of putting together some project narratives and working with, um, Mr. Melhoff to, to develop some media for us to leave behind with the representatives. Um, but there, they did a great job pulling together what we needed.
Darren, if you want to walk through, part of this is something that was either submitted or was possibly presented and, uh. It was just giving you a little bit more background on why we're asking. Why these projects were important.
So yeah, Mel kind of stole my segue a little bit there, um, we have these two different projects and again, they're different, different areas of county. Um, but the reason we're talking about them both tonight is, um. So again, we have these two different projects and the reason we're talking about them both tonight is because these are two projects from the electric side that we submitted for the earmark consideration. So, uh, one is the pole inspection replacement program, as you know, we've been doing this for several years, we talked about during our budget presentation, we talked about it during our hearing. Um, it's an ongoing, uh, project and, uh, actually Derek Spears, he's, he's, um, our superintendent of distribution overhead, he's going to come up and talk about that. Derek, uh, supervises all our overhead line crews and he's also managing several projects, this being the largest, so he's going to tell you a little about kind of where we are, give you an update. Uh, then I'm going to talk about another project, it's actually kind of, uh, two different things that will be bundled together, um, for this request as the Southeast Wyandotte County Grid improver. Uh, Derek, come up here and kind of go through the whole inspection replacement program with you, and I'll talk again about, uh, the second project.
Thanks, nice to question, uh. This was added to this particular session, was there any particular reason why you thought it's important added to this?
Uh, we, we just had the name on the second project incorrect, that was all, just correction on, on the second project.
Thank you, sir.
Uh, hi, my name is Derek Spears, I'm superintendent of overhead maintenance, uh, electric operations, uh, met most of you, um. So I will get into this, um. The pole inspection program, uh, was started about four years ago, uh, with the intention of inspecting all wood poles, uh, in Wyandotte County area that BPU is attached to. There are varying, uh, degrees of that, especially with different ownerships and we try to, uh, work through those issues because there are some other pole owners within the county. Um, our goal is to, uh. Do an entire inspection of the county of these wood poles that we're attached to within a ten year cycle, so we try to do about ten percent per year. Um, those numbers do vary, um, we take in consideration locations, workload and, um, what the expected, uh, reject rate will be. Um, the, we inspect the overall pole condition and structural integrity of the pole. This is, uh, a visual inspection along with a bore test, which I'll talk about a little bit more here in a minute. Um, the entire point of the pole inspection program is to, uh, improve system reliability and improve, uh, public safety. Um, we have an aging system and, uh, we need to do it's on it. And part of that maintenance is identifying poles that, um, have a reduced amount of strength left in them. And then, uh, trying to get them changed out in a, in a methodical and, and, uh, efficient manner. Uh, when we do inspect them, uh, there is a treatment that's done to the poles that pass, uh, so we attempt to extend the life of the poles that, uh, pass also. Uh, it's roughly estimated that you add another ten years of life onto the pole with the treatment that the company does. So, uh, we start off with every pole's visual inspection, they inspect it from the top to the bottom, um, looking for things like shell rot, um, wooden, uh, pecker holes. Um, any kind of degradation that is, is visually obvious. Um, if the pole passes that visual inspection, they continue on to a, uh, partial excavation, which is the picture you see here. They excavate on two separate sides of the pole and inspect below ground level, most decay, uh, happens below ground grade. Uh, and so they're, they're trying to get that six to twelve inches of below ground grade to inspect that pole. Uh, if there's no major decay with the excavation, then they do a sounding and then a bore test, which they actually drill two holes, one on each side, uh, into the pole. And with the bore test, they take a, a probe and feel for soft wood or, uh, voids within the pole. Uh, depending on where those voids exist or the soft wood exists, um, they enter that information into a, into, uh, their calculations. And it returns a, um, expected or, or, uh, remaining strength left in the pole. Uh, and we'll get into what that number means to us here in a second. Um, once they're done, if it's, if this is a pole that has passed inspection, then they, um, apply a treatment, which is, uh, it's called a Cobra rod. It's a rod that they put into the hole that they bore. And then they plug that hole, the Cobra rod actually forces oxygen out of the pole. Uh, because the few things that you need for degradation of wood is oxygen and moisture. So if you can get one of those two things out of there, that pole will last a bit longer, so. That rod lasts about ten years, that's expected to last about ten, over that ten year cycle of that rod, it will, it will continue to force the oxygen out of that pole.
Nice, I just stop you for a second on the treatment. Is, what is exactly?
The chemical?
Yeah.
Um, well.
Or, I mean, would it act like a varnish on wood, I mean, is that, it doesn't?
No, it's, it's internal, uh.
All internal.
Yeah, so all the treatment is internal and, and, you know, we went through an extensive process with our environmental group on, um, you know, whether it leached or. Or had any, uh, effects on the, uh, external, uh, environment. And, um, they, you know, they gave it the thumbs up. Um, but this is a treatment that's used widely by, um, utilities in this region and.
Would you explain the treatment?
So it, it, it's, um, it's a rod that's chemically, uh, impregnated with, uh, the chemical, I do not know, off the top of my head, I couldn't find that.
What is a chemical that you put inside?
Yeah, I was thinking you were protecting the outside somehow.
You can treat the outside of the pole, um, but that's not what we do, that would require a full excavation. But treating the outside of the pole and doing a full excavation is you then expose that pole to more oxygen. And so with a partial excavation like we're doing here, we're limiting the exposure of, of oxygen to the, uh, buried part of that pole, which is going to receive most of the moisture.
How deep are the poles buried?
So, uh, for a pole, you, uh, the formula is ten percent plus two feet, so if you have a forty foot pole, it'd be six foot deep. So it obviously varies with the, the different heights, um, but that, that's the general rule. Um, and, and the Cobra rod does the holes that they bore, it goes within those holes.
Okay, and that's what gives it an additional ten years?
Yes, and then they plug those holes, and so all of that's kept internally within the pole. Only way you could really access it is breaking the pole to it, so. Um, so we have, uh, about fifty seven thousand, uh, poles in Wyandotte County. Um, the pole, so far, the number of poles we've inspected is, uh, eighteen thousand nine hundred and eighteen, that's over the last three years. We are moving into our fourth year of inspection, um, the inspections will happen later this year. Uh, so far, we've replaced about twelve hundred poles. Excuse me. Um, and then we have a backlog of about fifteen hundred and seventy two poles that have been identified that need to be replaced. These are rejects, um, that were inspected and then they were rejected.
Derek, out of that fifty seven thousand number, how many do we own?
Uh. I, I could definitely get you that number, my estimation is, uh, probably about eighty five to ninety percent of that. We are the majority pole owner in the county, the other one is, the biggest, uh, second owner is AT&amp;T, they do own a considerable amount, but nowhere near what we own.
And when we replace those poles, do we do that all at our cost or do we?
So if the pole is owned by another company and there are other companies.
I just mean our poles.
Okay, so yeah, for our poles, yes, it's our cost.
Okay, so we don't put any of the cost on any of the attachers?
No, not at this time, uh, according to the contracts by my interpretation, it's our responsibility to maintain them.
It's what?
Our responsibility to maintain them, they do pay us, um, an attache fee.
Fine.
Yeah, I'm sure you're aware of that.
One thing we did start though, Rose. If we notify, I think it's, but say AT&amp;T that they have a pole they need to replace and it doesn't get replaced after some days, we go replace it and. We take ownership, we start charging them attachment.
Right.
And that's my pain, yeah.
Well, I mean.
Let it fall down and we're out there anyway.
Providers have an interest in the pole being in good shape anyway, right, and so.
Sure.
That's.
Prove the path, we tried to capture that anyway. With all the attachments, so, you know, but it.
All but one.
Well, I know, I know, well, but I think we're in Google or in the, maybe backed up for renewal.
Oh, it already did.
Yeah, it just got renewed either last year or the year, even there was an escalator or you go. Uh, that I'm not sure about, yeah, I think it is.
You guys ought to take a page out of the IOU playbook. Sorry, go ahead.
So in, in total, we have about thirty three percent of our system that's been inspected so far. So this is our estimated areas of inspection going forward. Um, I will warn you, uh, these will change, uh, somewhat, I mean, they shouldn't change drastically, but they will change. Ones in the, in the shaded areas, those are the completed areas so far. We honestly selected these areas based off of, uh, general knowledge of the, of the. Condition of the system, typically in that northeastern area is about, or was about our worst area. And then, uh, net, this year, uh, the inspection towards the end of this year will be down towards that KU area, um, and Southwest Boulevard area, so.
They need some work down there.
Yeah. And then, uh, and then we'll move west and we'll, we'll kind of bounce back north and, and kind of loop back around, so, um. And, you know, we'll continue these, the numbers are up there, but like I said, these are subject to change, uh, just depending on, on how things go.
We'll get a copy of this presentation.
Sure, yeah.
We already did. Well, we got one in advance.
Right, so you're right, that was awesome.
Well, you know, gonna write the note.
Um, so this is off of our GIS system that we, uh, maintain, this is, um, all the poles that have been inspected so far. So the green stars are poles that have been replaced already, those are complete.
Wow.
The, um, you see the little blue, I don't know, dandelions or whatever they are, um, those are poles that are in progress at the moment. Um, and then you have the red and the orange, those are rejected poles, and so those are due, due to be replaced.
Yeah. I think on that, I mean, green ones are the ones we replaced.
Yes.
We inspected, that was all, all of them were replaced.
Yeah, yeah, those are, those are not just, those are only the ones we replaced, the green stars. Yeah, so, um, this, I do want to remind you though, that this is not a representation of all the poles in this area. Um, when you put that up there, it gets quite cluttered and you can't see a whole lot until you zoom in real close, so I kind of wanted to give you guys an overview.
What'd you say, the little purple dandelions or again?
Uh, those are in progress right now, yeah, and at the time when this was taken, I think quite a few of them have already come off, uh, when we screen grabbed this. Yeah, so up in the Fairfax area, there's a few in progress and then down around, uh, City Park, is that, uh, southwestern, down there. So. And that is, I believe, all I have, you guys, uh, oh wait, not, sorry, I got one more stuff. Um, and so this is a smaller, uh, uh, view of that larger map that you guys saw. These are the phases of replacement for two thousand and twenty four. Uh, this is what we're planning to get done in two thousand and twenty four. Um, there are about, uh, I believe, six hundred poles in these twelve phases. Um, and so. We broke these down to try to, um. Get the crews that are working on this concentrated in specific areas instead of them traveling all over the county all the time. Um, it helps us work efficiently. Um, it also helps us on tracking, but on top of that, when we break it down into those small areas as they move through each phase. We can, uh, work with our storeroom group, our purchasing group on supply, because we typically change out of around five hundred poles per year, just on a normal basis. We are attempting to add another five to six hundred on top of that. Now, you know, I believe we'll be successful, we'll see if we are successful, but that, taking that into consideration, supply may become an issue. And so we're trying to get ahead of that and especially with these phases and planning it out and then seeing how fast the crews move through the phases, we should be able to get in front of any supply issues.
The software helps with that?
Yeah. Yep.
The large majority of our poles are wood?
Yes.
How, uh, how about, uh, concrete, steel, I'm sure we have a few of those.
Oh yeah, we have a considerable.
Are there pros and cons? Or, I imagine the wood are probably the least expensive or they last longer, they, which, which.
I could probably talk all day on this, but I, I think probably the point is, uh, there's definitely advantages to concrete and steel. Uh, disadvantage is, is price, um, and then also, uh, installation. Uh, it, it's not quite as easy to grab a, a steel or concrete pole as it is a wood pole and get that stuck in the ground. Uh, and so, you know, like I said, there are definite advantages, the lifespan is a lot longer. Um, you know, typically we estimate to get about thirty years out of a wood pole. Um, a steel or concrete pole, there's no real topping there, um, and so you, you know, it, it could essentially be in there forever. Um, and then depending on what type of equipment you have installed on it, you. And then depending on what type of equipment you have installed on it, you may not have to do, you may have to do very little maintenance on that type of pole.
As we develop or as developers develop, is is this a UG, or do we have any regulation as to use a metal pole or you use a concrete pole or?
So most developments are required to go underground. But that being said, ones that we do do have newer overhead builds on, I'm aware of, there's no requirement, but we do most frequently install some type of steel or concrete pole a lot.
It depends on, you know, where, where that's at, where it's located, you know, what it's serving.
Yeah.
Sorry, it depends on where that circuit's at, where it's located, what it's serving, maybe how many servers from it, so we kind of take all that consideration. More design.
There is a, there is a judgment call on how much you spend, which is how much life you're going to get out of it. And if you're, if you're getting a reasonable return on investment, we try to make that that call, especially how much power is going to be used out of that service. It's a very small service, and you don't want to necessarily spend ten thousand dollars to to build a service in there that may last forever. But you might only make, you know, a couple of thousand dollars a year on that service, so there's consideration on that.
Do we have many that get damaged by accidents or trucks making to?
Wood poles or other?
Wood.
Wood, oh, yes, it is.
A high number?
Very high. I couldn't give you that number off the top of my head, but I can tell you it is a almost daily occurrence.
Daily?
Yeah. I think we had three or four weekend. Yeah, it is a, it's a huge problem, and we've done, we've done quite a.
Trucks with?
It is.
They're not even there when you get there.
Yeah.
They've gone away.
It's a mix.
Survive.
Yeah. We've done, we've changed our claim, trying to recoup some of that money quite a bit. And so, you know, we have an individual at Electric Operations that spends considerable amount of her time communicating with insurance companies, you know, the ones that we are aware of and can find, communicating with insurance companies, trying to to recoup some of that that money that costs. Are there any other questions?
Thanks, Derek.
Sorry about the problem, emails. I didn't get this. That's about season I had, the end dollars.
Six and a half million.
Let the record reflect that Mr. Parker and Mr. Haley have now arrived in attendance.
And what's our annual cost per year bill on this program as it is?
Half million, I believe, is what we've been annually budgeting.
That's what's in this budget, twenty-four, do you think?
And we have that, of course, ongoing through the whole five-year budget right now. You know, just to add a little bit, like, like, you know, Bill mentioned, we've submitted that for funding. Obviously, we're big believer in this program. You know, it's great for maintenance for our system. You know, in addition to the poles, we're catching a lot of other issues. We're building other equipment issues, kind of updating the system. But as you see, you know, Derek talked about doing five to six hundred of these poles a year, and that's with additional resources committed to it. And we have, you know, fifteen hundred, so that was kind of the while we picked this for the funding, you know, trying to get some assistance, we can keep this project on track, keep all the good work going and keep us on schedule.
This is our fourth year of inspection?
Or is it our crews that work? It's a correction and.
It it's both. It's our crews and contractors.
Something like, we we had a pole inspection for a year, year. Had to walk away from it because of budget restraints, and then also for a fifteen-year period, so we was chasing a lot of economic development, so all the legend stuff came up, you know, the stuff around KU, all other parts. We were building substations, building transmission, running new distribution feeders out, so couldn't keep doing the new development and do all the proper maintenance necessary. So now allow that flow, we're trying to focus back on our main. And who knows these days. Not only doing all the preliminary work to get somebody and get a symptom in place, but we can do it. Or anybody involved in all of the respective.
I think the real benefit will be our commitment to stand with it, just like vegetation management, right? If you let it go to save five dollars, when you go to catch back up, it's going to cost you twenty-five, so this will be the first time in my twenty-four years and and probably the first time in Bill's twenty-four years that we will have been through the entire system in a decade. But at the same time, in that same decade, we'll have been through the system vegetation-wise three different times. So that's if we can stay dedicated and focused to that, the long-term benefits are going to be, because like Darren alluded to, now somebody on a regular basis is looking at every piece of equipment in our system, not just when there's a problem, so.
Well, we have data to support with vegetation. You know, manicures have done for us, so it'll be interesting down the road to see the results. Glad you're looking ahead.
What's that?
I'm glad you're looking ahead.
Yeah, no, we're very excited about the program, absolutely, so. Second project I want to talk about, it's it's actually kind of two different projects for us, a transmission piece and a distribution piece. We kind of put those together for this funding request. We're calling it the Southeast Wyandotte County Grid Improvement Project, because that's that's where it's focused. You know, and with this project, we're going to do, again, some work. We're going to try and improve our transmission system liability for for that entire area of the county. You know, that that benefits, again, that whole area, but also the KU Medical Center. And we're also pairing that transmission work and distribution work that's kind of specifically targeted at KU Medical. You know, beyond how important those medical facilities are for our community, we're also trying to set up adequate system capacity for a proposed expansion. You know, there's been a lot of talk the work and the plans they have down there, so we're trying to be ahead of the game on that, ensure we have adequate capacity on both transmission and distribution systems. Next slide, please. So again, talking about this distribution portion of the project, like I said, that's primarily focused on KU Medical Center. This is something that is already in our five-year budget. Right now, we're working on design and everything this year. We'll plan construction next year. It's three new distribution feeders from the new Rosedale substation. Two feeders, again, will go over to the existing KU hospital. You know, we've done a lot of work down in that area with the new substation and other things. But we still kind of only have two main feeders to that campus, and when one of those feeders are down, they do not do any electric procedures. It really puts kind of kink in and and what they're doing. So it's a big deal, even losing one of the feeders we have now. So adding those extra feeders will give them even more redundancy. It'll give us some switching options if if we have one of those other feeders, you know, down, and we have to make some extensive repairs. And then the third feeder will be will be ran kind of in in preparation for the proposed expansion and new facilities they've been discussing with us. I mean, there's not much I can tell you on on that. They've been having a lot of conversation with us about what their plans are and certainly lots of other folks, and and they have, you know, a timeline. We've been discussing with them, but that's the distribution piece. And again, that's all right to budget now. The transmission portion of the project is not, but it's something, like I said, we felt made sense to pair at the distribution portion because of the benefit to KU and again, the whole area. So what this is, is for construction of a one sixty-one transmission line between two of our substations called Barber and Muncie. And what that does, it it creates a transmission loop, a big transmission loop feed for five of our substations, and one of those is the new Rosedale substation feeds KU. And so it actually improves reliability for a very big section of the county down there and, you know, our Argentine pump station and lots of critical facility, lots of other medical facilities down there besides just KU and certainly lots of customers. So that project is involve reconfiguring, you know, about one and three quarters miles of some existing line that's not in use and rebuilding a little bit more of some existing sixty-nine line to one sixty-one. I've got some maps on the next page, but just to kind of talk through that, one of the most challenging things is, you know, transmission is very expensive. And one of the most challenging things with it is, you know, right-of-way. Obviously, that's congested area. There's a lot of customers, a lot of people, so getting the space to even construct something is is pretty difficult, and then it's very costly. So this plan is is actually going to be very affordable, because we're, again, utilizing some existing right-of-way and existing line we have and building on that to to create this. So I think it's going to be a good project. You go to the next slide, please.
Let's talk for one second. Has there been any decision on the street? You know, there was some talk of the streetcar going down Rainbow.
I haven't heard anything about thirty-nine to Rain.
Thirty-nine to Rainbow. Would that affect?
Now, this, this will kind of show, this is pretty general, this is, but it's, it's not near near the Rosedale.
Okay.
This, but.
Okay.
There's a lot, a lot going on here. This is, you know, just a snapshot of kind of that southeast corner of our system. The dark blue lines are sixty-nine KV transmission lines. The light blue dash lines are one sixty-one KV lines. So you see, we have quite a few substations down there, both one sixty-one and sixty-nine. You know, it's a pretty busy area. And then there's pretty difficult to see, but there's also a a light gray dash line kind of running out of Barber Substation up kind of north of where Mill Street Substation is there. If you guys see the app right there. So again, that's an existing line that's not currently in use. That used to be, before Rosedale Substation was built, we had the Barber to Armoredale line. That's how that was all connected. So that's the old piece of that line no longer in use, and we, you know, construct new lines for for Rosedale Substation as part of that project. So if you can go to the next slide. So that is our path, just kind of general terms, again, running along that existing line that's there. So that's that's built. There's not much needs needs to be done there. We have to do some rework at the substation and some rework, you know, we're going to tie into the new line, but in general, that's that's, you know, utilizing the existing asset we have. And then we're jumping on, you know, a sixty-nine KV. If you remember, one of our big projects for this year is we're we're building a new Mill Street Substation. That's going to move to the one sixty-one system, which is right there, and retire that sixty-nine line. So again, that's something no longer in use, so we're grabbing both those assets and and we're going to generate the, or sorry, build this path. And so that makes a big loop from Muncie to Barber to Rosedale to Armoredale back. So we're looping all those substations together. So again, that that benefits, you know, that entire area, everyone served off those substations, and you know, Mill Street's in the middle, will be in the middle of that, but all five of those substations will be benefited. You know, right now, it's obviously just just one long path, and that path actually goes pretty far up north all the way to Neiman. You know, so that's that's a concern for us. So doing this benefits us here greatly, and it actually even helps kind of the whole eastern part of the county by giving you some more flexibility on our transmission sets, so if there's any issues. So again, kind of two separate projects for us will be separate projects in the budget book, but we package those together. Again, you know, kind of focusing on on benefits, not to the, not to just the whole area and the critical facilities, but also KU Med and kind of leaning into a lot of things, I think, for supporting job growth, which, you know, this ties in again to the expansion and lots of things like that, so. Any questions about that? I know it's kind of a lot all at once, but it's just kind of overview of what we're looking for.
This project we're submitting now for funding. Budget.
So, yeah, we're hoping that it, again, it's, I think, a pretty cost-effective solution that, you know, doesn't disturb anybody who doesn't and already has that transmission line there, so we're not, you know, rebuilding anyone's yard.
Thanks.
Yeah. And you know, beyond that, there's a transmission distribution piece. Hopefully, we'll get funding for both, but at least we get maybe.
Is the project dependent on the funding?
You know, no, again, I think the the KU project is the the feeder distribution is already in the budget for next year, you know, and that's kind of in conjunction with their expansion and our discussions. But that's our plan right now. The transmission project has been something we've been considering. It's just because of some competing priorities, we haven't, you know, got that to our five-year budget, but it would be on the horizon. I think it's just a question of timing as far as whether we can get funding.
So borrowing and seeing if they come back. More revenue coming in as expected, then you can get the budget. But if something disruptive happens, then, yeah, we'll have to.
What's kind of the timeline for knowing if we're going to get federal funding? Do we know?
You know, I think we'll go with will the funding become available? Probably next year or a year after.
How would getting the federal funding impact the timeline of completing that? Does that speed it up since you're not having to chunk it out budget year by budget year? If if we were able to achieve that, how much faster would we anticipate being waited?
Like I said, it's it's not in our budget right now, so, you know, that's always, again, as Bill mentioned, depending on a lot of factors, but, I mean, you probably move it up by at least three years with the funding.
I think it's just twenty twenty-five federal budget.
Yeah.
It took two years to get the water funds, not just approved, but the water bonds here. We'll make a new job at, and those reimbursement.
To to get the approval, so it took almost a year to find out, got it. And then it took another nine months to do the application process. It's a total process to get the approval. Now we've got approval, so now we have, over the next two years, we'll spend the money.
Thank you.
And we'll reimburse this as we submit.
And we do have a water project that we're submitting to for the center of the region. I'll have Steve come back and talk about that. And then I'll also have Dave probably tag team that same day to talk about the entire process. There's all the stuff we got to go through in order to make our application and get approved.
In addition to what we've already got for water?
Yeah, yeah, we're submitting some of our requests.
So I do want to have Tom left. So as you know, I gave a grant update just a couple of months back here, and the grant process is really totally different than what Dave and the electric guy water are working on on that side. So this is really a process where where it comes through the system and essentially alerts all of us that participate in that space. So wanted to give you a quick update on where we're at. So here recently, we did hear word on the four one oh one D grid resiliency, which we did put in an application through the KCC DOE project. We, those are two projects through Darren's group that we put in an application for a Fairfax project as well as a downtown project to receive funding through that that project. But we did recently receive word that we did not receive or are not going to receive those funds in the first round of funding. As part of that project, we did use a grant writer as part of that. But this is the first request, first funding request out of four expected rounds of funding. And so we expect over the next few months to learn more about what applications are expected to receive funding. It looks like about thirty percent of all the projects that requested funding are likely moving forward with funding piece. Just as an FYI, but we'll we'll see what projects did get awarded, what kind of size and scale they're looking at funding-wise to see if if we want to move back in the next round of funding with the same projects we have here, or whether we need to change those to do a different style of project. The the grid resiliency projects are really broad in scope, and so it's really, it'll be interesting to see what what path the state and DOE are looking for on that. So that's where we're at on that project, it looks like. So the Climate Pollution Reduction Grant, that's a pretty broad grant as well. Our project as part of this is we are proposing a low-income community solar project where eighty percent proceeds from the value of that solar produced will be returned to low. produced will be returned to low-income households through the on-bill credit, so really the goal of this project is to lower the greenhouse gas emissions here locally while improving resiliency and adding along from cost mitigation to low-income households here, here in KC. Uh, so one of the good news here is, uh, we did just receive notice here over the last few weeks that, uh, BPU's proposal was included in the P cap or action plan effectively, uh, so the state came out with an action plan. Uh, we were approved to, to move forward with part of that. Um, we've also had held conversations here recently with Mark, Mark is an organization here in the region. Um, and so Mark also has a P cap plan, and so effectively, this is a somewhat of a unique, uh, application process is the state of Kansas puts in a P cap or action plan, and Mark puts in an action plan, so Mark represents effectively nine counties here in the the Kansas City region, and so we fall both under Kansas as well as the Mark application, and we fill both of those needs. And so we'll, as we work through that process, we're working through the most advantageous way of of attempting to get funds through this process, either directly through the, the state and EPA uh, as well as hopefully working with Mark to get funds through that side as well, so uh, we'll work through that over the next, um, really the next month, uh, as, as we go through that process, but we at least have two avenues to explore funding on, on that front, so that's a, that's good news. Uh, the solar for all, that's a, that's a baby I've been working on for a while. Again, it's the same style project that the CPRG is, it's a low-income solar project where the value goes directly back to on-bill credits, low-income households. Um, as you may remember, Bill and Dave Milhoff, uh, went up to Topeka and spoke to KHRC staff. Um, I also had a conversation with KHRC staff here over the last week or so, uh, great conversation. Uh, I continue to put through the community solar approach, it sounds like KHRC is really on board, so I feel really good about where we sit in, in those communications. Um, still preaching equitable funding, everybody determining whatever equitable funding means, it's, uh, up in the air, but the EPA has has numbers that they publish in terms of the number of disadvantaged communities, number of low income in those disadvantaged community. So I'm urging the KHRC to utilize some of that information to determine how much funding each county, each, you know, city gets, and so uh, we're working through that, and then we also discuss the mechanism to access potential program participants, so one of the challenges is, is how do you get those participants that would be eligible for, for those valid programs, and so we're hoping to, uh, work with the state, the KHRC, to access LEAP participants and those type of participants to access who would be eligible for this type of project versus standing up your own mechanism to determine income and those type of qualifications, so it'd be much more effective, much more efficient. Uh, I feel good that we're moving in the right direction on that front as well, so. Uh, we also have a cybersecurity grant.
There was something, emails came out that had on the air.
So that, that was the CPRG, uh, we were included in the P cap plan as, as part of uh, that, so that, yeah, that recently came out, um, good news, so we were included as, as one of those entities and get a move forward in that process, so yeah.
With all our amount.
So we put in a project proposal plan of ten million dollars is what we put in, we would expect approximately seven million dollars is what we would hope for as part of that. Again, we'll see what funding actually comes back, but effectively a, a five-megawatt solar project is what we're hoping for, which costs about ten million dollars to build. So we, we take it, we'd hope to get about three million through dollars straight through the IRA, direct thirty percent tax credit and then the other seventy percent through the, the grant program, so that's the goal. Um, we do have some cybersecurity funding that we're looking at, uh, both Jerry's team and, and Jaren's team are working on some of the cybersecurity funding, at this point, it's still a wait, waiting game, uh, no update from the, the DOE APA, APPA at this point, so that's just a work in progress as we wait on hold on to see where that moves forward, so next slide. Uh, there was a new grant opportunity that came out here last week, it's called Seaside or Community Sparking Investment and Transforming Energy. Uh, that's through the DOE, um, it's still a work in progress, we don't know exactly where we'll go or, or what we're going to do with this, but I wanted to include it because it is something we're, we're working through and thinking through at this point. Some of the goals are really to deliver direct local community benefits, clean energy, spark additional investments in communities, advance community identified energy priorities and build capacity partnerships in local governments. One of the challenges with this grant, I'll, I'll, I'll say is, the total dollars are pretty low, eighteen million dollars nationally. Five to twenty awards nationally, that's a pretty limited number of awards on a national scale. Um, so we got to decide what makes sense for us. Is it worth going after, how much time and those type of things, so as we think through those, and, and do we have a project that we feel really good that we think can move forward, so, um, it is something worth exploring, maybe that, anything that pops up, we want to take a look at and see what makes sense to us and, and the community, so we are looking at that again, it's just posted last week, and so we do have some time to to work through that, but, um, that's where we stand, next slide please. Some other grants that we're, we're actively involved in, but these wouldn't be grants that BPU would be part of, uh, whether it be fleet and bus electrification, we have several partners, whether it be the schools, uh, unified government looking at some of that electrification work. Uh, we're also working through some NAVI funding, uh, NAVI funding is just, I'll say highway access, electric vehicle charging units. Uh, so, so we're a part of that conversation to make sure that those chargers get to our communities and so forth, so if we look at, uh, at that infrastructure, again, these wouldn't be grants coming through BPU, but we'd be part of, next slide please. And I'd be remiss if I don't mention all of these, uh, again, we are in the prime time schedule for additional assistance available, so whether it be utility assistance funded directly through BPU, agency assistance, LEAP, EC Can, the utility rebate program, Homestead. Now is the time to apply for those, if anybody's listening on the online is really like LEAP program is open till March twenty-ninth, so if you're going to apply, now is the time to apply. Urge as many people as possible to apply for these things, again, on, on some of our grant opportunities to reach out to some of these low-income households. We hope to use the LEAP application form to, to get additional funding through us, right, so if, if we get some of these grant dollars we want those, and, and so those are available, for example, LEAP is a hundred and fifty percent of the federal poverty level, so effectively forty-five thousand dollars for a household of four. Uh, just shy of thirty thousand for a household of two, so if you fit any of those criteria, I urge anybody that can to apply for those, you can do it online via paper, however, so anyway. Uh, wanted to bring that back up, and next slide, and that's all I got.
So the thought of the solar, uh, if it works based on how the federal government, uh, hopes that it works, and us too, you know, we're approved, the people that are recipients of the energy off of solar possibly CEO, she has seen it, there's energy costs get reduced by about twenty percent.
Twenty percent, how? How would, an on-bill credit, right, so?
No, no, so, so how would they, they benefit from, you're talking about solar? But you're talking about the solar community, right?
The community solar project.
Right, that's, is that what you're talking about?
Yes, yeah.
Okay, so you're saying that they would have to move to the community?
No, no, no.
They're already in Okay, okay, so you, you're saying that our solar would be provided to them?
Yes.
Okay, okay.
Through the federal funding, through the tax credit.
Okay.
And by crediting those, those bills.
Yes, sir.
It would get reduced, you would get the funding from the Fed.
I understand. Yes, sir, but, but I don't want to, want to cut you off because I see you preparing for a question, but, but I'm, I'm really concerned because as I'm, I'm here seeing, I'm being frustrated because I still see us pouring, pouring our do- pouring our, our, our dollars into holes, you know, I mean, or pockets with holes in them. I mean, because, because I'm, I'm still don't see, are we helping them if we're going to give them energy assistance, yet their home is not efficient.
Well, we're talking about that too.
Well, I didn't hear that, I didn't hear about, 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 about energy efficiency and, and, and making their homes, you know, more energy efficient, and I I, I, I didn't hear that.
Well, well, I didn't say anything about that, I don't have any grant for that.
Okay, so I understand that Department of Energy does provide those type of grants, and I understand that they have a large program, uh, in
Kind of ten thousand dollars. So since they are being, they're recipients of some of that federal funding just trying to fill the covers back and see exactly how this will work and how this BPU participates.
So there is funding through the EC Can and some of those programs there, again, it's two hundred percent of federal poverty level that they can apply
Right.
Through the state, but yeah.
So here's what I told him down, okay, if we're able to achieve a twenty percent reduction it's a solar project, and then you add the energy efficiency funding on top of that, now you could potentially look at thirty, thirty-five percent reduction, some of these houses that are leaving.
Amen.
But you got to be bold.
Okay. You're right, yes, thank you.
Um, Andrew, thank you for that presentation, um, you, you know, we, we fit two really important presentations into a less than an hour tonight. And, you know, when, when Andrew comes and gives us grant updates, I, I personally think, Mr. President, that that's something that should be done in a regular session. Because a lot of the things that you're talking about in particular, some of these things we just went into, and you're urging the public to go do the thing, not a lot of people pay session, so that's just something I, you know, and, and again, you know, we got into some great detail on, on some of the grid, uh, improvement and, um, you know, certainly the pole replacement program, again, two very, very important topics. I, I, I don't think we did them both as enough justice by trying to cram them into an hour.
Yeah, I agree, so part of it is that the session, my superintendent, uh, UFC company, and that asked the committee to be there's a, there's a conversation she's having across the community that I thought was important for the boards to understand, because we may be involved in that, you know, bonds passes. And it's just something the community needs to be educated about. Rusty bottom is that. We would all just get in consideration, keep that in mind.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Under advisement. Make sure that, that's one of the considerations when we set the agenda. Okay, I, uh, we're, we're running a little bit long here, so we'll probably need to adjourn this meeting and get into the next meeting.
Mr. President, I move we adjourn.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we adjourn the work session, roll call please.
Roll call, Parker.
Aye.
Gonzalez.
Aye.
Grandaman.
Aye.
Haley.
Aye.
Waits.
Aye.
Mulvaney, Henry.
Aye.
That's serious, this meeting is adjourned.